Good morning. The committee of the whole is called back to order. We'll be entertaining Bill 107-37. But at this time, we only have, we don't have a quorum and we only have, there's only four of us senators here this morning. Apologies for running late. Currently, we have only Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munro Barnes, Senator Jason Juan and Senator Sabina Perez. But we do have a panel ready to go. As soon as we get a quorum, we will return and to order and we will continue with Bill 107.
Should we swear it now?
As a matter of fact, why don't we go and, Sergeant Arms, why don't we go and swear on the panel so that at least that's done? I'd ask the panel to please rise.
Please raise your right hand. Under penalty of perjury, we all affirm that any and all information you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Mr. Chair Donneroth.
Thank you. Being that we don't have a quorum, we will go back to recess and to such time we have quorum. Thank you. The committee of the whole is called back to order. We have a quorum. The materials for the committee of the whole are in shared session, Google Drive folder labeled Committee of the Whole, Bill Number 107-37 LS. Propose amendments must be submitted in writing to the clerk via email, sessiondrive@guam legislature.org. Amendments not in writing will be called out of order. Rules of engagement: three rounds for discussion. We will have two rounds of questions for the panel, which each senator allotted five minutes for questions, not including responses. Time to speak may not be used for more than one minute to another. A member who yields that member's time on a question yields all that member's time on that question and may not later speak, even if all the time used was not used. After completion of the two rounds of questions, panelists will be excused. Third round is for amendments or comments to speak on the bill. Questions should be confined to the substance or nature of Bill 107. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will be called out of order and, my colleague, you will be removed from the hall. Proper form of the quorum shall be practiced by all present. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form of the quorum will be restricted from participating and will be escorted and removed from the room. After completing the discussion of the bill, I will allow the sponsors to close and I will entertain a motion for the recommendation of the committee of the whole, followed by a motion to rise from the committee of the whole, at which time I will report out the bill as recommended by the committee of the whole. I thank you. At this, I advise my colleagues, the panel, the panelists have all been sworn in. Okay? At this time, I ask my advice to please take the chair while I read off the bill. Thank you. And I'd like to also advise my colleagues that Mr. Diego has a very important meeting to go to at 10:00. So when we start with the panel, we'll allow Mr. Diego to first speak in general to the, to my colleagues about the bill so that hopefully if there's any questions, we can start with him and that he'd be able to be excused to go take care of business. Thank you.
Good morning, colleagues. Before we get started, I'd like the panel to introduce themselves, starting at the far right.
My name is Mary R. Garrelle. I'm the lone administrator at Guam Housing Corporation.
Half a day, I'm Angie Camacho, Acting President, Guam Housing Corporation.
Good morning. I'm Joey Cruz, the program coordinator for with the Chamor Land Trust Commission.
Half a day, my name is Joe Diego. I'm the area director for USDA Road Valment for Guam, CNMI, and the Free Associated States. Good morning. Thank you.
Half a day, I'm Luan Terlahi from the Office of Finance and Budget, Chief Fiscal Analyst.
Good morning. Jason Baza, Budget and Management Analyst Supervisor, BBMR.
Thank you so much to the panel for being here this morning. At this time, we'll recognize the chair, Joe Sinagastin. Senator, please, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to, for my colleagues to accept Bill 107-37 as substituted by the Committee on General Government Operation Appropriation and Bill 107 is an act to appropriate $500,000 from the General Fund to the Guam Housing Corporation relative to the funding and maintaining the Guam Housing Corporation Rural Housing Service ESCRO Savings Account for affordable housing.
There's been a motion to move Bill 107 for the committee of the whole. Is there any objections? No objections? You may proceed, Senator Sinagastin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill 107-37 LS was introduced by myself, Senator Sinagastin, along with fellow co-sponsors, Vice Speaker Tina Munro Barnes, Senator Canata, Senator San Nicholas, Senator Parkinson, and Senator Shelton. For some time now, we all know that cost of homeownership has skyrocketed beyond its affordability for many families here at home, and we are working on ways to address the ability of families to build homes and properties that they own or have been deeded or leased for such purposes in an effort to uplift the family unit. The average price for home on Guam is currently $420,000. Real property on Guam has been scarce and it's difficult to find a decent single-family dwelling that is affordable. The Guam Housing Corporation and the U.S. Department of Agricultural Rural Housing Services are in partnership through a memorandum of understanding. Their MOU is in respect to making and guaranteeing and servicing of USDA, RHS, single-family housing loans to owners and leases of Guam lands. Under Title V of the Guam Housing Act of 1949, RHS is prepared to provide loans and grants to low-income families. GHC will facilitate and serve as the guarantor of such loans through an ESCRO savings account to provide a source of funds to protect RHS from borrower default on these loans on Guam. This will support the program in the event of loan default by the homeowner and is in line with the property management by CLTC, Chamor Land Trust Commission, insured by the next applicant of the CLTC provided to GHC, maintained. And I am appreciative of the support of my co-sponsors, Vice Speaker Tina Munro Barnes, Senator Canata, Senator San Nicholas, Senator Parkinson, and Senator Shelton, and ask for unanimous support of this body to assist our family in uplifting the lives of our families who for so long worked toward homeownership. Si dos masi. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Sinagastin. That being said, we're going to start.
Joe Diego.
Oh, okay. Okay, at this time, I'll recognize Joe Diego from SBA.
Thank you, Vice Chair and distinguished members of the Guam Legislature. So my role here is I'm going to explain, I guess, the package that is being proposed through this bill and in support of the memorandum of understanding that will expand eligibility of our housing programs to Chamor Land Trust properties. So well-built, affordable housing is essential to the vitality of communities in Guam. Rural development, single-family housing programs give families and individuals the opportunity to buy, build, or repair affordable homes in Guam. Through the program, through our programs, USDA offers qualifying individuals and families the opportunity to purchase or build a new single-family home with no money down, to repair the existing home, or to refinance a current mortgage under certain qualifying circumstances. So in a nutshell, we're looking at expanding two of our programs that are already available outside the Chamor Land Trust. One is our 502 homeownership program. Under this program, USDA can lend up to $440,000 at a rate as low as 1% with the term amortizing that loan anywhere from 33 to 38 years. So the borrowing potential of a first-time homeowner is enhanced with our 502 program. And the other program that we have is for, if you're already an existing homeowner and you need essential repairs done to your home, whether it be electrical, whether it be plumbing, whether it be to make your home accessible because of elderly household members, we have another program where we can provide up to a $40,000, 1% fixed-rate loan for 20 years to make that home safe, decent, and sanitary. So the, through this MOU supported by this legislation, the MOU we're proposing to include Chamor Land Trust and Guam Housing will expand these two programs to Chamor Land Trust. The MOU we currently are proposing is similar to what we've, we already have in place in Palau and the Marshall Islands, and we're soon to inaugurate in the CNMI, probably in the next 30 to 45 days. So it's a framework that's worked for USDA. It's been a It's been a win-win situation for the communities, for the government, and for rural development. So that's the package that we initially proposed to offer through the passage of this legislation and the execution of the MOU. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diego. At this time, I'd like to open it up to Guam Housing Corp., if they would like to make any statements regarding this bill.
Guam Housing Corporation supports the bill. We look forward to working with USDA and CLTC to make more programs available for affordable housing. We acknowledge the challenges that our people have been facing with regards to homeownership, how difficult it's been with the cost of homes, with the cost of materials, with the cost of labor. So we look forward to any programs that can put our families in homes, and we look forward to working with USDA and CLTC.
Thank you, Angie. Joey, Guam Land, Chamor Land Trust.
Good morning. Our Acting Administrative Director, Mr. John Birch, extends his apology for not being able to attend this morning. CLTC will be resuming their recess meeting from last week, but I am here to provide his testimony. Hafide, Senator Sinagastin, and members of the 37th Guam Legislature, I am here to express my support for Bill 107-37 LS as amended. However, I would like to clarify that my endorsement of this bill is my opinion and does not represent the official position of the Chamor Land Trust Board at this time. It is important to note that the Board has not yet addressed or formally discussed the bill. Nevertheless, I would like to inform you that the CLTC Board has scheduled a meeting this morning and will address the issue of Bill 107-37 LS. Bill Number 107-37 primarily focuses on appropriating $500,000 from the General Fund to the Guam Housing Corporation. This funding is intended to serve as the initial minimum deposit into the Guam Housing Corporation Rural Housing Service ESCRO Savings Account. The bill establishes the GHC RHS ESCRO Savings Account and outlines the necessary actions to be taken in the event of a loan default. It also involves the CLTC, which would provide the next qualified applicant to GHC, utilizing the remedy provided by subsection 75A 112H1 and subsection 75A 112H2 of the 21 GCA in cases of loan defaults. I believe that this bill with its amendments holds significant potential to address the pressing need for affordable housing in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Joey. And you'll find this testimony on the drive, the Google Drive for everyone. Next, I'd like to invite Jason from BBMR, who submitted actually a letter yesterday morning. Jason?
Morning. I'm going to read written testimony on behalf of my Director, Lester Carlson. Hafide, Senator Sinagastin, the Bureau submits written testimony for the following. Bill No. 107-37 LS as amended, an act to appropriate $500,000 from the General Fund to the Guam Housing Corporation relative to funding and maintaining the Guam Housing Corporation Rural Housing Service ESCRO Savings Account for affordable housing. Per the January 2024 Consolidated Revenue and Expenditure Report, the General Fund is currently tracking an unobligated FY '24 General Fund balance of $17,358,900. Therefore, should it be the will of the body to move forward with passage of this measure, the Bureau notes that the current unobligated FY '2024 General Fund revenue balance will be sufficient to cover the appropriations set forth in the bill. It should be noted that the Governor recently authorized allocation from the American Rescue Plan to the Guam Housing Corporation in the amount of $500,000 for the first-time homeowners' program. Please accept this written testimony in lieu of the Bureau's attendance, as I'm currently off, and my staff is entrenched with reconciling appropriation accounts as part of the transition from the AS400 to the new financial management information system. I did speak with Guam Housing this morning. The first-time homeowners program is different from the program set forth in the bill.
Senator Sinagastin, I'll open it up to you. Would you like to ask any questions?
No, no questions, Mr. Doug.
Okay, Senator. Senator Sabina Perez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning to the panel and everyone, my colleagues. This sounds like a great program. 1% interest, up to $440,000 for the 502 program, as well as repairs. So I guess if you can explain a little bit more, what are the eligibility requirements? You know, for those that are listening and are interested in this program, what are the eligibility requirements?
Thank you, Senator. So the eligibility requirements are you must be a first-time homeowner under the low-income category, and that's based on HUD's income limit. So as an example, a family of four, income cannot exceed $64,650. And if you double that, a family of eight, the income cannot exceed $85,350. So it's really meant for those that need this type of assistance with no down payment and subsidized interest rate.
Okay, thank you. And in regards to the ESCRO account of $500,000, how was that determined?
That amount is just a, there was no rhyme or reason to that. It's just the amount we've used in our previous ESCRO accounts in Marshall Islands and Palau. But I have to also include the caveat, I was just looking at some of the reports, in the Marshall Islands, where we've had this MOU in place for well over two decades, although they have a $500,000 ESCRO account, the current outstanding principal balance secured by that ESCRO account is well over $11 million. So it's been a lot higher. It's just that as pays, people make their payments gone down. That's the current outstanding principle, just in the Marshall Islands, based on a half-a-million-dollar ESCRO account.
Okay, so what you're saying is that there's $11 million owed, but it's always stayed at $500,000 in the ESCRO account?
That's correct.
And so basically, that doesn't cap the amount of loans that can be made?
The intent is not to cap the number of loans that are being made. That's correct.
Okay. And then this ESCRO account, is it interest-bearing?
From what I understand, yes, it's going to be deposited in an FDI-insured lending institution.
Okay. All right. And in the case of, if there is a default, what does that, what does that trigger?
So I know we were having our sidebar last, yesterday, so if I'm off a little, please correct me. So first of all, USDA is the business of having successful homeowners. We're not going to foreclose if you're 60, 90 days behind. We know there's a reason. So when a borrower becomes delinquent, first, we offer a wide range of servicing tools, delinquency workout agreements, supply payment assistance, moratoriums, assumptions, and so on. So that in and of itself, if we do it even on a timely basis, it will take two years before we make that determination, at least two years before we make that determination that we have to foreclose. So technically, after we've done a loan on Chamor Land Trust, we would get the secure, I'm not sure what Guam Housing has, but in the outer islands, we have a deed of trust from the trustee in lieu of a mortgage. So we would tell Guam Housing, we service this borrower as much as we can, we can't get it current, so therefore we're referring it to you to pay USDA our principal interest. So technically, if there's no other funding sources available, they would withdraw that funds from the ESCRO account. Let's just say roughly it's $100,000. We would surrender the liability to Guam Housing, and technically, they would get another client to take over the loan, whether it be from Chamor Land Trust or someone within their inventory. And we could even fund that new client to take over the loan, and that would be actually a priority because of the hardship that's placing. So basically, when we re-loan funds for that same dwelling, the proceeds of that loan would go back to replenish the ESCRO account. So that's technically how that would work.
Okay, thank you. In the testimony that was provided for the public hearing, there were some recommendations by the Guam Housing Corporation regards to, I guess, language in the legislative intent. I noticed that the language hasn't been changed. Would you recommend that those amendments be made? Because I believe one of the issues was that, that the, one of the partners wasn't mentioned in the legislative intent, which was the Chamor Land Trust, of maybe, yeah...
In the substitute bill, we did address it. The one that, it's in the substitute.
Okay, so it's been taken care of. Okay, good.
Correct.
So then, basically, the MOU is still the same as it was when it was first created? That was back in 2005. Has it changed, or is it the same?
We may have to create a new MOU, being that the loan guarantee will be designated.
Yes, the initial MOU in 2005 was executed, but because of the Fair Housing lawsuit that was presented by the Department, to the Department of Justice, it was stalled until two, three years ago. So now that opens again the path to do a new MOU, and we're, there's been a lot of changes to our program and requirements since 2005. So that's what we're working on now. And at that time, the MOU in 2005 was only a bi-party MOU between Rural Development and Chamor Land Trust, I believe. So in this case, we're doing a tri-party MOU to involve Guam Housing, since they have the underwriting expertise, and then Chamor Land Trust with the inventory of properties. So it's going to be a tri-party MOU now.
Okay, that's good. And so basically, we're going to protect the settlement agreement with that MOU, is that correct?
Yes, Senator, that's in the tent. We're incorporating some of those settlement provisions into the new MOU.
Okay. And then, what do you foresee, maybe this is a question for Guam Housing Corporation or even Chamor Land Trust? So what do you envision this particular partnership would provide for our people as far as homes? What is the, yeah, what is your vision for this?
This program will address families in low income, as Joey Diego mentioned. It'll expand lending, it'll expand loans for those with low income.
How about as far as the amount of people who own homes? I mean, considering, you know, what Mr. Diego said, there's no limit. Did you go out and check and see how many potential...
So I think a big factor here would be CLTC's loan, I'm sorry, program applicants. We need to look at how many of them qualify for loans, and then who would qualify, for example, in the low income, who are medium income? So we will work together with Chamor Land Trust and look at their list of applicants.
Okay, so at this time, have we received any applicants? This is for CLTC?
Applicants related to the 502 and the 504 program?
Yes.
At this time, no.
Okay. So I guess this is, you know, an opportunity for the community to hear this and, you know, maybe look into applying, because this is such a, it seems like a great program for affordable housing, access to affordable housing.
It's a new program.
Yeah. Okay, I think I'll save my other questions for the next round. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator, Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, you have the floor.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and thank you to the panel. Manana situs. Thank you all for being here. As I listen closely to Joey Diego and realizing the program, the opportunity to start a third program here, literally, I'm excited to see how this can work. The vision was there since 2005. We're now in 2024. So this will bring opportunities for thousands of Chamor Land Trust recipients who are on a waiting list, if I'm not mistaken. But let me share my perspective and why I think this program is going to be great for Guam. It expands Guam Housing Corporation's loan programs. Currently, if I'm not mistaken, right, Guam Housing Corporation has two loan programs, the Regular Portfolio and the Native American Veteran Loan. Both, I think, it's still at 6% interest rate, right?
And... It varies. It depends on the date that they actually applied and they're approved. So it could, it could go as low as 4%. The 6% program allows it to go as low as 4% depending on the pre-bailing rate. And then, of course, the Veterans Administration Program that we do package, that one varies on the time of the application, too, and their interest rate. So, and that would only be strictly to the veterans, of course.
Thank you. Even better news. You know, for me, a third loan program will open through the appropriation at an interest rate anywhere between 1% and 4% depending on the income demographics of the applicant, right? And for me, it establishes another financing option for Chamor Land Trust recipients. Financing, I must say, remains the biggest hurdle for many recipients from building their home. Many are living in temporary makeshift housings due to their inability to secure money to build or improve their homes. And when you talk about the investment into our community, I think that new housing will definitely stimulate our economy, and it will generate consumer spending, create more jobs across various industries in Guam. And again, always, as I always advocated, it's adding to our tax base so that the government can provide the basic services to our community. And as I was hearing Joey Diego speak about the program, my question was in reference to the added provision in the substitute bill that protects the ESCRO account and ensures another Chamor Land Trust applicant can take over the loan when the original applicant is unable to make payments. And maybe just a reiteration so that people can clearly understand, because I know that Joey tried to explain that, how the process works and why this, why we, it is important to specify this provision into the legislation. It's like if one defaults, then the other applicant from Chamor Land Trust, another recipient can be able to step up to the plate. Am I saying that right? So between Joey and Chamor Land Trust and Guam Housing, please share your thoughts again on that.
Yes, that is accurate. Having another eligible CLTC, let's see, to come in if one should default, and this even can be prevented from being in the default status. If they're already noted that they're having difficulties, and another eligible applicant from CLT should be there already, we are working with Chamor Land Trust, so they give us even more than one, because it's not, I know it has to be processed in the order of date of application, but not everybody might be eligible for the amount that they're going to take over if one should be in default.
Joey, would you like to add anything to that?
Yeah, I agree. That's the reason why that Fair Housing lawsuit was presented, because it challenged the constitutionality of Chamor Land Trust. But now that that's been settled, this MOU is specific to Chamor Land Trust beneficiaries, the trustees, in that, and it's similar to what USDA does for the waiting list we manage, is that when we foreclose a home, it's an opportunity for someone that's number five or number 10 on our waiting list to move up, because it's a priority now, in that if they want to take over a foreclosed home and they're eligible for it, we would finance that person to buy off the liability on that home, and that's now their new home that they can not only purchase, but fix up and renovate and do any repair work that's necessary.
Thank you, Joey. And then to Chamor Land Trust... And then to Tomorrowland Trust, if I'm not mistaken, are we looking at the recipients that are on the waiting list? Are we still in the thousands? Last time, I thought, I think it was like 5,000 or 8,000 or something to that effect?
Yes, Vice Speaker. Currently, CLTC has a waiting list of 8,000-plus applicants.
8,000-plus applicants. So thank you for that. Madam Chair, I, Madam Chair, I bring up all these sentiments because knowing that there would be a third program to help bring those that are just on the cusp of trying to build their homes, that this is another opportunity that we can give to our residents to literally have true homeownership. And having three different agencies, from the federal component and then to the local government's perspective, this is definitely a win-win. So I want to say thank you for that. And one more question is, if without this provision, would we have to come down again and request another appropriation to replenish the escrow account if that provision was in, not in? If we didn't have that amendment in, we would have, if this program were to go through, then we would always have to, you would always have to come back down to ask for more resources. Is that correct?
Technically, we shouldn't, because if we were to foreclose and Guam Housing paid the amount owed to USDA from the escrow account, all of a sudden, there's a gap from, like, the escrow account now drops from 500,000 to 400,000. Now, we're going to work with Guam Housing and Tomorrowland Trust to identify the next eligible applicant. USDA will fund that eligible applicant. And instead of the funds going to the applicant, it'll go back into the escrow account.
Okay.
So that's how it should revolve itself. That's how it's working in Palau and Marshall Islands. We haven't had a situation where they've had to go back to their legislators to request funds to help. Because again, that fund is also accruing interest. So, you know, there are going to be some funds that are retained there to further support the escrow accounts' balance.
Thank you very much, Joey. Madam Chair, I think this is very good. And seeing that the successes in Palau RMI and now going into CNMI, I really think that Guam should step up to give the opportunity for our residents to have homeownership. So Sizos Massey, Sida Massey, for your answers to my inquiries. Thank you.
Sizos Massey, Vice Speaker. Next is Senator Joanne Brown. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Certainly welcome to everyone on the panel. I mean, I think we can all agree, the need has been there for many years. And certainly, the opportunity to connect the services that can be provided from USDA, also from the land of Tomorrowland Trust and also from our other partners here at Guam Housing that can assist. I think we all understand how important this is to move forward. But I did want to ask a question, because this came up yesterday when we were dealing with $50,000 appropriation for a Veterans Conference. Has any money been transferred to address this particular legislation already from the administration to Guam Housing?
Not for this program, Senator.
Are we aware at all if anyone has received $500,000?
Not for this program, Senator. We did receive $500,000 for our first-time homeowners program.
Okay.
With RFTHAP, but this is a different separate.
How recent was that? Has it been a while?
No, it just happened. We met with the governor about a week or two ago.
Wow.
And we mentioned that, it has nothing to do with this
Okay.
legislation in front of us.
We just want to make sure we're not surprised again, because, you know, obviously, the governor seems to have a lot of money to throw around these days from ARP funding.
That was to address our issue with people on a waitlist for the first-time homeowners.
Well, either way, I mean, I think it's still good to allow those, certainly. I mean, I think anyone who's had the opportunity to have a home, you know, we all appreciate what it was like the first time we were able to actually see our own homes be constructed or for those that actually directly purchased their homes. So I don't want to belabor that discussion. But I just wanted to verify, because, you know, it's nice when you can be governor and you can be the legislature and the administration at the same time and hand out money and be praised for it. How wonderful. I'm glad to hear that, because I see that the appropriation of this particular bill, 107, is coming from the general fund. And I did want to inquire, Madam Chair, or if I can ask the main sponsor, in his oversight of the budget, where exactly would this 500,000 come from?
Senators, and I'm just thinking, would you like to yield to that question?
Yes, Madam Chair. You know, BBMR already mentioned that it's going to come from the surplus or the available cash out of the 17 million. The 500,000 would fit right in and be able to be taken from there. And that was reported already by Mr. Jayce from BBMR.
Well, I appreciate that, because then it doesn't affect any existing appropriations that we did in the budget letter part of last year. So I don't have any questions. I think we can sit here for an hour, two or three hours, and talk about how great this idea is and how bringing all these parties together, particularly USDA Joe and all the work you've done for so many years. The fact that our neighboring islands have been able to take advantage of this program and for a while, and we have not here on Guam, where our USDA offices situated, is kind of ironic. But nevertheless, moving forward, providing what is literally, in the bigger picture, not a significant amount. 500,000 is a lot of money to us individually, but in terms of our government, not a very big chunk. But nevertheless, I think the implications of where we can move forward to help a lot of families out there and keep them here on Guam. I think if anything is so discouraging lately is the exodus, the exodus of our talented, our tax-paying base that is leaving here every day. And I know everyone probably, I saw it at Christmas time in my own family. Our gatherings have gotten smaller and smaller in the younger generation, the younger children that are growing up that will not experience in their life growing up on Guam. I have a lot of Tomorrowland cousins that have never even been here that have more Tomorrowland blood than I have. And I have tremendous pride that we live here on Guam and we reinvest back in our islands. So if there are more of our own families that we can keep on this island to raise their children and continue the legacy of our people, I think that's wonderful and more support to all of you. So I certainly support this bill and the appropriation. And good luck on your work in executing, particularly for Tomorrowland Trust. We want to see that progress. And I know for you at Tomorrowland Trust, you see a lot of our people living in, you know, wood and tin shacks that they built just to try to have some place to call home. And if they have an opportunity to have a more secure, safe living environment, a clean living environment, I think that's what we all want to see for our people. So thank you. Continued work to you. You know we'll keep our eye out on your progress. But thank you again. Thank you for taking the time to come this morning and speak with us.
Thank you so much, Senator Brown. Senator Jesse Luhon, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Morning, panel. Mr. Cruz, let's see if I can, sorry, I can't see you. Mr. Cruz, it was mentioned that there were 8,000-plus applicants, Tomorrowland Trust. Have that, have all that been, again, been looked at? And maybe, how many of those 8,000 have been deemed qualified and maybe have since been removed? Is the 8,000, are the 8,000 applicants all qualified applicants?
At this time, the 8,000-plus applicants haven't been reviewed to determine eligibility for the program.
Okay, okay. So we don't know how many qualified at this point? And maybe how many have passed or things like that, right? We don't, we don't have that number at this point?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. You know, on Section 2 here, it says, "The event of the loan default, the Tomorrowland Trust lessee, the Guam Housing Corporation shall request that Tomorrowland Trust Commission, CLTC, provide the next qualified CLTC applicant or lessee utilizing subsection 75A, 1112, H1, and 2." In regards to the next qualified CLTC applicant, would that be, I guess I'm asking both GHC and CLTC? And the reason why I'm going to ask this, because if there's a default, and the default is based on 120 days of non-payment, right? According to GHC, or the Guam Code annotated, 120 days. And then, of course, 60 days, if they're in default, 60 days. The lending institution will already tell GHC that, hey, watch out, these folks may be in default. But should there be a foreclosure and a house erected on that? And the foreclosure happens, it'd be the next in line? Or will you utilize or find somebody in the family that may qualify? Because, you know, I mean, they'll come to the legislature and say, hey, man, you know, we qualify for it. We already built this house and things like that. And why can't he come to us? The law doesn't state that. It says the next qualified on the listing. So will that be just on the Tomorrowland Trust listing them? And not dive into maybe a family member that will, that will qualify for that particular place? Because it's not defined here. It just, it just basically says the next qualified person.
There are still things that the lessee will have to meet, such as maybe a seven-year hold on that or having that lease. Perhaps they could transfer it to a family member who could qualify. And we do hope that we are able to exhaust every effort before we get to that default. But on CLTC properties, I believe we do have to go to CLTC to provide the names of those that may qualify.
Sure, okay, great. I think that's all I have, because again, I'm reading the Guam Code. And it's not, it's not defined, but you're saying you're going to exhaust all the measures possible to be able to try to save that family's home and all that. Because, yeah, if it's not defined and, you know, when they have foreclosure, they all freak out, you know? And so they'll come down and they'll say, hey, you know, I qualify for this too, but my name's not on there. Why aren't we offered as a family member before the next person in line? Because the house is already there and we've, you know, whatever. But anyway, so again, when do we foresee that the review of the 8,000 may, maybe how many, maybe a dwindle down? Because we know that there are some, of the 8,000 applicants, do we have enough properties, basically, for homes?
At this time, our current inventory is sufficient.
It's sufficient? Okay. Because there are some properties, I know that, again, that's probably unbuildable, right? Because they're on cliffs and things of that nature. But the 8,000, based on the 8,000 that hasn't been vetted yet, there is enough, and there is enough inventory for, at least the 8,000 at this point, right?
In terms of property available, if I remember correctly, we administer about 11,000-some acres. In terms of whether the property is usable or not, that's another question. There may be properties that will require some type of investment to get it usable, like you mentioned, because of the terrain. But at this time, we have not stopped collecting applications, so
Sure, sure.
there's sufficient amount of property.
Sure. So let me ask Guam Housing Corporation if they want to build on this property? And, you know, I mean, there's sufficient investment that needs to be done, because it's in a cliff and things of that nature. But they're low income and they won't be able to do it. What happens then? And it's going to require a lot more, I mean, a lot more earth-moving before a home is even erected or even, you know, the infrastructure put in there?
If the property is deemed unbuildable or unusable, perhaps we can go back to CLTC and maybe transfer them to a property that's more suitable? That might be an option that we could explore.
Okay, but that being done, would they have to go to, they won't have to go to the back of the line then, right? To be able, I mean, if that property is deemed unbuildable at this point and they were ready to go?
If they're holding a lease already?
Yeah.
They're no longer in that line.
Okay, no, no, but if they're, if they're going to go to another property, if that property is deemed unbuildable, would they, would they have to go back to the back of the line again in regards to properties available that are buildable properties?
Currently, an applicant is given three options or three chances. The third one, they have to take. If not, then they get removed from the waiting list.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
You're very welcome, Senator Luhon.
And thank you most much. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Luhon. Minority Leader, Senator Frank Blas, you're recognized and have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for purposes of clarity, Mr. Blas, the letter that was, that you read into the record that notes the governor authorizing $500,000 for the first-time homeowners program, was your understanding, or you know if it was the understanding that this was the 500, that this $500,000 was supposed to go to this other program? Or?
My understanding, it was supposed to be for the first-time homeowners program. So after clarifying with Guam Housing, the two programs, the first-time homeowners program and the program in this bill are different.
So at least that's clear. We're not talking the same, same, same program.
Correct.
I, I don't know who this question is going to be for. Or Joe, maybe you can answer this with regard to the USDA program that we're talking about specifically here. What does it, what does it specifically cover? When we're talking about Tomorrowland Trust, in some areas, you may want to talk about having to put in the utilities. Is this the assumption that this lot has already got all that right outside its door and it's just a matter of hooking it up?
Part of our program requirements is that the site is acceptable, so infrastructure does have to be in place. On that note, Senator, we've actually been proactive with Guam Housing and Tomorrowland Trust with some of our federal partners that are watching this MOU, because as an example, I don't know if you're aware of Neighbor Works and RCAC. They're actually here on Guam. They're looking at the Gil Baza zero-down subdivisions and looking at resources to put infrastructure there. So if this MOU were in place, they stand ready to engage with the government of Guam to look at infrastructure needs for Tomorrowland Trust. USDA actually does have an infrastructure program wherein we could provide typically a 55% grant of the development cost. And that can actually go up to 75%. So there would be a loan component typically of at least 25%, amortized over 40 years at a rate of 2% to 4% depending. So that's, that's looking forward. Once we get the MOU, I think we've worked with Tomorrowland Trust on some potential development sites that we could use our infrastructure program and also, at the same time, simultaneously identify Tomorrowland Trust eligible recipients to acquire homes there. So even though there may be a loan component to that infrastructure, that'll be added on to the cost of constructing and owning a home on that property. And basically, the grant that we provide is intended to lower the development cost for infrastructure for that homeowner. So maybe the construction cost for the home will be 100,000, but the pro-rata share of the infrastructure could be, I don't know, maybe 5, 10,000, 20,000? That'll be added on the cost of the construction of the home. So that's just looking forward that we have that group ready to engage with Tomorrowland Trust and Guam Housing on infrastructure needs that we can kind of work together to see where we could, you know, launch this infrastructure program and simultaneously have trustees of Tomorrowland Trust ready to purchase the pad-ready lots, I guess, if you may.
Okay. So that handles the back, the front end. Now, on the back end with, in the construction of it, does that include, you know, other, you know, I guess, hazard mitigating issue concerns? Typhoon shutters and the whatnot? Can that, is that included in the package?
Yes, Senator, it is included, because we're going to require insurance, but
That's the next question I was going to get to.
Yes, we require them to have insurance in place at closing of the loan.
Okay. Mr. Cruz, now with regard to just hearing what this program and what the money can be used for and recognizing that there, that it can be consolidated or can be combined with another program for infrastructure of the inventory, the property inventory that you have, that would be sufficient for the 8,000 applicants or so? And granted, you know, you take the And granted, you know, you take the averages out of the 8,000, there may be a couple thousand that may not qualify, okay? And the like. Is there property in your inventory if there was a flood of individuals that want to take advantage of this program? Do we have the sufficient enough properties in our inventory to be able to meet the infrastructure requirements for the build?
If I understand the question correctly, does CLTC have property with infrastructure readily available? We don't have any. Currently, we are working with Guam Power Authority at the moment, and I believe the board had already approved an MOU with GPA to utilize a portion of our property in Gigo right behind their substation. And in return, they'll provide in-kind services to energize certain pieces of property designated by the board. But as of any property that we have readily available with current infrastructure, no.
Oops.
At this time, our lesssees are burdened with paying for the installation of infrastructure needed.
Okay. Then we'll move now to Guam Housing. Just hearing all of that, how do we intend, you know, if we want to roll out this program next week, how do we intend to be able to tackle that issue? First off, we've got the infrastructure, and then in the back end, we've got the insurance. And then in the middle, you've got your program. So how... This, Mary?
Okay. Initially, I would like to just do an affordability analysis. What does the applicant qualify for? What's the maximum that they qualify for? And from that, they can determine, break down, okay, to meet our family needs, this is how much I need for construction, and this I can use for infrastructure. All of this, though, would be based on their repayment ability and the appraisal value to support the loan amount that they are requesting. So what we are requesting from CLTC is give us those, give us at least 100 names. Let's see how they fare in terms of affordability analysis. If you want to give us based on an area that they want to develop and there's more of them in that area, then you can also, you know, capitalize how much they can, for each lot, how much can go to address infrastructure and then work it from there. But we know that they have to be processed in the order of application, but we really should be going through that already and determining what is their affordability. Because that can start your planning.
And I appreciate that. But, you know, again, I appreciate this conversation here so that when this does get announced, we do recognize, okay, that when you do go in and the analysis is going to be done, the analysis is probably going to be done. While you can qualify for so much, just know that so much of that will go towards infrastructure that doesn't exist. Yes, ma'am?
Senator, may I? So I believe we have to all look at this in a focused method.
I understand.
Methodology, right? So where infrastructure is closest, and then that way, we can reduce the cost of water, power, sewer. So I think with CLTC, we can look at a focused way, and as you bring in, as you bring in homes, then it becomes available to neighboring properties, right?
Sure. I appreciate that. I just don't want, you know, a family now to, you know, hear that this, now this program like this exists, great interest rates, you'll be able to qualify for this if you fit this criteria. They go in and they says, okay, I'm ready to build the house. Oh, by the way, this, I've got, you know, I've got CLTC or I'm on the list, I'm next on the list. And they come in and, you know, it's not to say you're going to shoot them down, but it's part of the reality is that this, some of that money is going to go towards having to put in stuff that aren't there, isn't there already. And then you've got to remember that you've got, because, you know, this is a loan program, mortgage program, most, you know, people with homes with mortgages, there's this thing called insurance, all right? That, and the tariff rates in insurance just went up, for the most part, okay? So I just wanted to make sure that that's very clear in this thing. I appreciate, I love, this is a great program, okay? I love the way, you know, everybody is working and trying to get here. It's just that we have to bring out the nuances so that we truly understand, you know, what this is, you know, what this is for. Because, you know, even at 500,000, I notice this, this is just an initial investment into an account that needs to be, what scares me is that knowing now what everything else that needs to be put in or that you may be paying for, so whether or not the 500,000 are, because then primarily, you're going to use that 500,000 to cover a default on the loan, right? Until you can get things back up and running. Okay? And the way the economy is at right now, I just want to be able to make sure that that can be sustained and that revolving in that thing, you know, it can help multiple families. Okay? So I can appreciate that. I'll say, okay, yeah, my time's up. Thanks.
Thank you, Minority Leader, Senator Blas.
Madam Chair, if I may, on a point of inquiry, maybe to ask Joey or anyone on the panel, based on the previous question and statements, is there anything that we have, like the Chamor, the 166 program?
Okay, we're going to continue on, Madam Vice Speaker, and allow the next one, but you can use that on your second round. We have a second round coming up.
Well, Madam Chair, I just wanted, because the question was pressed to ask before he leaves, so I'll go ahead and ask on a sidebar.
Yeah, that's right. You have to leave. You're absolutely right. My apologies, Madam Vice Speaker. Let's go ahead and have Mr. Diego answer that question. And anybody else who has any questions for Mr. Diego, please?
I was talking just to bring history in. It was the Gigo area on the Chamor Land Trust 166. I just thought I'd bring it up since you asked the question.
Okay, I just got word that Mr. Diego can stay just a little bit longer, so I'm going to continue on.
But if he can answer that just?
Sure. Okay, for the sake of time and that he has to leave soon, so I'll let you answer the question, Mr. Diego. If you can, again, Madam Vice Speaker, state your question again.
Just based on what was previously asked, is there any similarity with the Chamor Land Trust, the CLTC 166 program? And maybe you can bring it to light on what has happened or where is it at? Are you familiar with that?
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with that, Vice Speaker.
Okay, so we're going to move on. Thank you. Senator Chris Duenez, you have the floor.
It's the Chamor Land Trust, the 166 lots in the Gigo area? No?
Madam Speaker? Vice Speaker? Yeah. Madam Vice Speaker, can we just keep moving on for the sake of his time? You know, they can answer it later, but I need to get him out very shortly. Okay, Senator Duenez, if you have any questions for Mr. Diego?
[inaudible]. [inaudible], Madam Chair, and I did, yes.
Okay.
Welcome to the panel and we'll move along, but I'll get to Joe first. Joe, I wanted to be sure on this, of course, I support this bill. Is this going to be a loan guarantee or is it actually the revenue would be coming from the programs? I'm just wondering if Guam Housing is going to underwrite the loan and carry it and then you're a loan guarantee? I wanted to understand the mechanism.
So the mechanics are, and I might be off a little bit, but Guam Housing will submit a application package to USDA saying they've already vetted this applicant with, from Chamor Land Trust. They're going to package it, give it to USDA to underwrite, and when we approve it, in the outer islands, we get deed of trust from the trustee in lieu of a mortgage. So that's basically our security instrument. So in the event of a default, we'll return that deed of trust to Guam Housing saying we've tried, we can't get them current, please reimburse us in accordance to the MOU. So they take that deed of trust, reimburse USDA, and then now they have the title to that property. They'll work with Chamor Land Trust to get a substitute client to take over that property, and then they'll come back to USDA saying, okay, we got a substitute client, can you fund that client to pay off the outstanding liability on that? And we would, and then that funding that we award would go back into the escrow account to replenish the deficiency.
Okay, Joe, what I'm looking for here is, is Guam Housing going to be carrying the loan and rural being the loan guarantee? Is it going to be on their portfolio, on their books, or actually it's financed? They're basically the lender of record and managing their portfolio? Is that correct?
If I'm correct, so we're going to carry the liability. So the only thing we're getting from this MOU is, like I said, the deed of trust in lieu of a mortgage, if I answered that correctly.
So Mary, I want to bring you into this, and I think you know where I'm going with this, because I just want to make sure in terms of the lending capability of Guam Housing in the complete corpus of what you have available, that that's not what's happening here and that it's being capitalized basically under the program of USDA.
Right. This bill provides for the direct loan with USDA, but Guam Housing's role would be to package the loan applications so that we can then, they can move forward. We would address the CLTC eligibility. All of that would be done by Guam Housing as a packager. So our role is just that, and then we move it forward to USDA. We've already would determine that they do have, we kind of do a preliminary that they are in fact eligible for the loan. And so then we would move forward to them, but it would be a direct loan with USDA.
Excellent. And once again, going back for the listening audience and people who maybe might not understand is that the Guam Housing Corporation is basically the only lender that's able to do mortgages on CLTC property, correct?
Guam Housing has loans out there with the CLTC, but we have a few, a handful from the Veterans Administration.
Veterans, correct, yeah. Okay. So Joe, one final question. Is there any programs available because we're tying this into this program and using the benefit? Is there any opportunities for infrastructure development funds through USDA based on this being maybe a gateway to funding capabilities under that? Are there any additional programs?
Yes, thank you, Senator. So Guam and the Western Pacific does get an annual allocation of infrastructure funds for water, wastewater. We typically get about $1 million on each, but that's just a starting point. That doesn't limit how much we can get. As an example, we just recently awarded, last fiscal year, Marshall Islands, $10.8 million for sewage outfall project. So their funding are there. Biden's bipartisan infrastructure legislation has put in a lot more money to strengthening and rebuild our nation's infrastructure. So there is funding out there, and like I said, it's going to be a concerted effort to work with Chamor Land Trust and Guam Housing to look at some of the properties. I believe it's up north where they have some sites that they could develop, they'll need the infrastructure funds. And with our infrastructure program, again, we do the underwriting for free, we do the legal review for free, and we throw in grants to lower the development cost that's passed on to the eventual homeowner.
Excellent. Madam Chair, can I make a recommendation in respect of Joe's time and wanting to make sure our panel, our group has an opportunity? Can I freeze my time and then come back to me?
Absolutely. Thank you for that. Yeah, thank you for that consideration. Senator Barnett, do you have any questions for Joe directly? And then I can come back to you again.
Not for Joe directly, ma'am.
Okay. Speaker Toulahi, you have any questions for Joe directly? And then I'll come back to you again.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I just want to thank USDA for its work in this and assurances. In the Marshall Islands, the $11 million that was secured by a $500,000 escrow, how many households is that?
Thank you for your question. It's, we'd have to go back because it's about two decades. My last report, over the last 15 years, we've done 160, about 180 homes in the last decade in the Marshall Islands, because right now, they're constructing 18 homes every two years. So that's been what they've been doing since 2005.
Okay, thank you. And the program sounds great, of course, wondering, yeah, too bad we waited so long on this thing. The poverty levels that you discussed, or not the poverty, but the income levels for HUD, family of four, $64,000; family of eight, $85,000 are actually, you know, significant to me. It looks like, this is, the 2020 census said that our average household income on Guam is $58,000, the median, the half, $58,000 in 2019. So, and Guam ranked 45th out of 50 states, Puerto Rico and DC in this level, meaning it's quite low. And I was trying to get my head around it again, as I did after the census came out, but it's like we've got 5,694 families living in poverty according to the census. 20% of individuals in Guam are 1 in 5 living in poverty according to that census. And so I would wager that we have many qualified applicants on that list, especially given how long that they've been waiting. So the 1% interest, that's correct, right? 1% interest over 38 years, is that similar to the SBA?
From what I understand, at least from the SBA's disaster program for the homeowners, they're offering about a 3% rate.
Oh, so this is even better?
Yeah.
Great. That's great, because I know that we put $500,000 in the Chamor Land Trust to guarantee those SBA loans, but, and those were lower at the time than I think the Guam Housing loans. But, so this is, we're just getting better and better. So it's great.
And one more thing, you know, just to let you know, COFA citizens are eligible for our programs as well.
Okay. And does, you don't have to be a Chamor Land Trust recipient to avail of this loan, that's correct?
That's correct. It's already available on island.
All over Guam.
It's just not on Chamor Land Trust right now. So that's what this...
Okay, great.
We're going to be doing now.
All right. So in the other cases, the guarantee is from them themselves, the applicant?
It's on private land, so we do take mortgages.
Okay.
So it's just Chamor Land Trust being that we cannot take a mortgage, that we're looking at this MOU.
All right. And, okay, I guess my other questions are for the other members of the panel. [inaudible].
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Diego. You are excused to leave. Oh, I'm sorry. Senator Siniklis, do you have any questions for Mr. Diego?
Good morning, Mr. Diego. Thank you, sir. What is the interest rates for these types of loans that the recipient may qualify for? Are you, if you're able to answer that for me, sir?
Yes, so our ceiling rate adjusts every quarter. So right now, the maximum rate we would charge is 3.875. So even at that rate, if a family is still having trouble with a mortgage at that amount, we can lower the rate down to 2% and down to 1%. And as I mentioned, in our effort to make a family a successful homeowner, as an example, after Typhoon Marwar, we gave all our clients a six-month moratorium where they didn't have to worry about paying USDA. And if they needed more than six months, we can go up to two years. Those in the hotel industry that suffered cuts in pay, we gave them moratorium or we lowered their payment. So we're there to help them become a successful homeowner. So yeah, thank you for your question.
Yes, thank you, sir. Can I come up there and hug you now or wait till you leave? But thank you very much for pointing that out because, you know, the market and the interest rates have been climbing, but it's very important that we let the people know that the interest rates for, you know, for their situations is very good and decent enough so that they can avail of the program. But one of the most dignified ways to live is actually to have a roof over your head. And like, I'd like to thank you and the rest for helping to facilitate this so we get better the lives of our people. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Nothing further. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome, Senator Siniklis. Senator Canata, do you have any questions for Mr. Diego?
Not for Mr. Diego, but CLTC?
Okay, I'll come back to you. Senator Fisher, do you have any questions for Mr. Diego? Okay, I will come back to you. And then Senator Perez, I know this is round two, so anybody else on round two for Mr. Diego? Diego? Senator Paris, you're recognized.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. So, yeah, I just have a question, because, you know, should CLTC think of more of a holistic approach on, you know, developing housing? Let's say, for instance, they've identified a location of their properties that already have infrastructure available. And let's say they're, you know, they propose to build a, like a condo unit of some sort to house families instead of individual separate housing. Is there anything in the USDA program that allows for that?
We may have a program. We have a direct program. The last time we used this direct program is Guma Tron Kiladet. It's a multifamily senior living home. Now, from what I understand, because there's so many multifamily homes across the nation, our national office has reserved the funding to refund existing projects. So they're not looking at new projects, but I think, you know, we can lobby that this is definitely, we haven't done one since the early 80s. So in fact, a multifamily housing specialist will be in Guam in April for the first time, and I'm going to kind of bring up these questions. So we do have a program, yes, to answer your question, to support multifamily housing programs.
Okay, thanks. And one more question, sewer connections. So in GWA's study on cesspool and septic tank elimination study, they mentioned in their program that the 504, section 504, can help pay for sewer connections, I guess if there is an existing infrastructure available. So do you concur? Is that, can you confirm if that's accurate?
Yes, Senator, that is accurate. We can do those sewer connections. The challenge we have here in Guam is, you know, we have extended families living in one home, so we count everybody's income. So for the most part, they don't qualify for the very low income threshold, which basically means a family of four cannot exceed $40,400 to avail to this program. So, but if they're within that income threshold, then yes, this can be used for sewer hookups. And we are planning to meet with the mayor's council in the next couple of weeks to kind of talk about these programs. Because on that note, I put in an exception request because of Marwar to increase the income threshold for this program, to not just focus on the very low income families, but the low income families. So again, that'll bring up the income. Now that limitation on the household of four at $40,400, now that's going to go up to $64,000, and that'll expand eligibility for families for this program. So we're hoping that goes through. We've already made and submitted the request.
Okay, yeah, and GWA is also trying to increase their loan amounts per family from $9,000 to $25,000. So I don't know if you've been in communication with GWA on their sewer loan rules?
We haven't, but yeah, that'd be a great leverage, because there could be some gaps that may be needed. And as an example, if you're an elderly household, we can give you the $40,000 grant as well, subject to meeting the income thresholds.
And so that would be in addition to the up to $440,000 max that could be?
The 440 is for a first-time homeowner. So this $40,000 is if you're already an existing homeowner, and you want to make your home safe, decent, and sanitary, whether it be to fix electrical or plumbing, or even make your home accessible for the elderly, that's what this program can do.
And it doesn't necessarily apply to CLTC?
If we get, if we get the MOU in place, we could do what we call it secured 504 loans, anything above $7,500. But currently, we can go into CLTC for requests under $7,500, because it'll be unsecured, where we'll just, they just sign a promissory note.
Okay. But for those that are not on CLTC properties, does this, is this program also available for those that are not on CLTC properties?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Madam Chair.
You're very welcome. Okay, we're going to go back to Senator Duenez. If there's no more questions for Mr. Diego, I'd like to excuse him. Any of the members here would like any other que, okay. Thank you so much. Mr. Diego, greatly appreciate your time and the extension. Oh, going over a little time, apologize for that, but appreciate it.
Thank you, Senators. It's my honor to be here, and I'll be happy to come back again at another time. Thank you.
Greatly appreciated. Senator Duenez, you are back at 3 minutes and 9 seconds, I believe.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Joe, as you depart, for all the hard work you've done and great programs you continue to bring to Guam. Have a great day. Madam Chair, so it's always nice to be with what I consider my family, the Guam Housing family and CLTC family as well. Thank you for being here today. I'm going to make a shameless request to the chairman that I be the first co-sponsor once the bill comes up for consideration and in the other to rise from the committee. Madam Chair and panel, I just want to, once again, you know, speak to BBMR and say, I am a little disappointed, though, and I know it's not your decision per se, but if there's any program that I think should get ARP funding is this program, given the fact that COVID has affected individuals so harshly with regard to housing. I'm just making that recommendation, but I'm going to fully support this bill. But I think that of the first-time homeowners program, as well as, you know, this program really are appropriate to be funded, given the massive impacts on individuals' lives with regard to COVID. Just wanted to mention that. But notwithstanding, we'll move forward. Joey, we were discussed, I guess extensively, your list, as well as, I wanted to go to the eligible list. What are we looking at here in terms of those who are actually, between Guam Housing and CLTC, actively applying for and seeking assistance to build their home?
Due to the recent typhoon, I believe we had a number of 27 lessees who came in to request for loan guarantees.
Okay, Mary, can you speak, or Guam Housing, can you speak to, you know, what the offering, how it's currently attracting individuals to come in and either apply or call in or just, you know, looking to work with Guam Housing? And how this program will really, once it's in place and it's announced, you know, increase the traffic to Guam Housing for this purpose?
This program will be catered, it's an income-driven, the one for 502. But because we're packaging, and if, should they exceed that income, there are alternatives. If they're veteran, we'll help package for the veteran, we'll do our housing, our Guam Housing loan program. So they have options with the CLTC, you know, if they exceed the income. And that income, I believe, is the limit, is an adjusted income. So they do deduct some amounts, so the adjusted income shouldn't exceed what is provided to you.
I wanted to get that on the air, Mary, because I think the Guam Legislature now is getting super high ratings with viewership. So I know a lot of people are watching, and I don't want them to disqualify themselves from a portion of and other programs that exist at Guam Housing, because I know that, you know, you're always there to help, and you're always there to make sure you fill the need. Mary, what is the, what is the, is Guam Housing going to assess a percentage? Or is this going to be a management fee in terms of how you also continue to sustain the operation and boost your portfolio going forward? Are you going to get an administrative fee under this structure?
In the MOU, it's proposed for up to 2%. And for the administrative part, for our administrative fee. So that's already stipulated in the proposed MOU for this partnership.
That's great, because I mean, and once again, for those listening, this is what continues to add to, you know, Guam Housing's ability to, once again, loan as well, because the administrative fee, being able to subsidize their operations, it means that their corpus of funding continues to grow. So with their other programs of income eligibility, it really just allows for sustainability of GHC, and that's why it's so important. So once again, Madam Chair, I support this bill. I just, once again, in terms of retaining our general fund as healthy as possible, if there's a reconsideration to go ahead and use ARP, that would be wonderful. If not, we pass this bill and get the money there immediately, because this is, this is what we call a no-brainer. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Duenez. Senator Parkinson, you have the floor? Any questions? No questions. Senator Chris Barnett, you have any questions, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You have the floor.
Good morning to the panel. I guess I just wanted to start, Mr. Bazza, Madam Chair, if you'd please indulge me, if I could get a follow-up. Yesterday, we had asked about the grant for the veterans. Were you able to get any additional information on that, sir?
Yeah, my staff was able to provide an update. So according to our analysts, the OVA grant was never actually received. It was initially awarded, but then we never actually received the grant funding. I believe OVA's director probably has more information on that. All we know is that we don't actually have the funding and an account established for it at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Bazza. Well, that's interesting, because I think the press release from the Office of the Governor said something completely different. But I guess I just wanted to kind of expand on what Senator Duenez was asking about. In your estimation, would the use of ARP funds be allowable for a program like the one we're discussing in this bill?
So it appears that there's a, with the MOU here, there needs to be a minimum deposit of $500,000 ARP funds. There's a restriction on using ARP funds for the non-federal match component of funding. And considering this is a partnership with USDA, I think that would make it ineligible to use ARP funding for this program.
Ineligible. Thank you, sir. Good morning, Mr. Joey. I know you had said in your testimony that there were, how many people on the list to receive Tomorrowland Trust leases?
A waiting list of about 8,000-plus applicants. 8,000-plus?
8,000-plus. And so this, who would be able to avail this program, obviously, right? It's current leaseholders of Tomorrowland Trust property?
At this time, yes.
Okay. So what if there are people out there watching? Because Senator Duenez had mentioned, our ratings are up. It's a good season here at the 37 Guam Legislature. Sidoos Masi, to the people of Guam for watching. But what about those people who are on the waiting list? And when, I guess my question is, when was the last time we issued a lease? Because I know there's 8,000 people waiting, and they're hearing about this program, but they can't avail of it until they get that lease. So where are we with the issuing of the leases for the residential Tomorrowland Trust lots? How many have we issued in, well, how many, just go ahead?
As of year-end September 30, 2022, the Tomorrowland Trust has issued about 2,911 leases. From that period to today, there has no lease been issued.
Why is that? So you're saying since 2022, we haven't issued any leases?
Correct. What we've had discovered through the issuance of our previous leases is that there were many, during the process of the lease issuance, there was a lot of actions that were in compliance with the law. For example, the succession of a lease by a grandchild. In the law, a grandchild is not allowed in the line of succession. There is also other issues of switching application date and times. The former AG, Elizabeth Barrett Anderson, had deemed 102 leases that were awarded based on the switch in date of time and the takeover of an application by a living, the transfer of a living application by a living applicant to be null and void. There are many other issues that we are encountering and experiencing. That's one of the reasons. To date, the Tomorrowland Trust has moved the line from the next five in line, not necessarily that they're numbers one through five in application sequence, but they're in the next five in line, we stopped at six. The sixth applicant was taken, the sixth original applicant is deceased. That applicant had named his grandchild as a successor to his application, although, again, the grandchild is not eligible to take over the application. So that's part of the issues that.
I mean, I get that. Obviously, you don't want to issue a lease to anybody who's, you know, skipped the line or otherwise been deemed ineligible. But what about the thousands of other people who probably didn't do any of those things?
Based on the act, we have to process lease awards based on how it's received, which is their date and time. So currently, we are working on, I believe, 8:07 AM of December 2, 1995.
Still trying to wrap my, so we haven't issued a single lease since 2022?
Correct, but we are working to commence the lease issuance. We've notified the first, or the next five.
What's the timeline on that?
I can't say, Senator, but we are working on it.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome, Senator Barnett. Speaker Toulahy, you're recognized. You have the floor.
Thank you. I was going to ask other questions, but I'm going to follow this line of questioning, because, yeah, that's one of the issues, is that when the AG came up with, you know, a list of null and void leases, or those that were voidable or could be conformed upon board action, there were different remedies. However, even through that, I believe the previous chairpeople and the previous governor were issuing leases, even through the lawsuit, they were issuing leases. And I think even when Angela, you were chair, you brought in a plan of, these are the next leases that we're going to lease, which tracts of land we're going to divide up and try to issue leases. And if we could get water in there, or sewer, if we could get sewer in there, we were going to be able to divide those up smaller. And I don't know, I just feel like there's a lot of turnover at the land trust, and sometimes they get distracted by private interests coming in, looks to me, and asking for, you know, this special project, that special project, this special project. So I agree, and I'm very much hoping that they are focusing on their tracts of land and how they can divide those up into quarter acres instead of half acres with sewer in there. And there's so many programs available now with sewer, and they're working with GWA. And so that's what I would like to see, and that's what, you know, we've had oversight hearings to have them lay out those plans as well. And they have, then it just seems to be delayed. So we're following up. I think the board, at this point, is very active in trying to get this done, right? So we're going to see some leases, hopefully, in 2024. I think we're, I'm hoping we're also going to see some infrastructure in 2024. And maybe that goes to my next question. I was going to ask BBMR if we are, you know, and this is maybe the third or fourth time you've been asked, but I just want you to clarify again. ARP funds could be used for, you said, almost anything, if there was a lack of revenue or something because of COVID. And if that's the case, but you're saying they cannot be used for this $500,000 matching?
Yeah, it can be used for the non-federal component of matching grants.
Okay, so is this described as a matching grant, this loan guarantee?
Maybe Guam Housing can confirm, but it says here on the legislation, it's a MOU with GHC and USDA as an obligation for the minimum deposit. So that sounds like in order to access funding from the USDA, they need to have this $500,000 in there. So I would consider that a matching requirement.
Okay, thank you. And I know that we had discussions early on with Tomorrowland Trust and GWA. In fact, when ARP money was available for that sewer to be laid down in some of these tracts, so that we can ensure that the house, that lots could be divided up into more. And now we have additional programs available. I believe my colleague in the last budget put in money for. And now we have additional programs available. I believe my colleague in the last budget put in money for sewer infrastructure. And I'm not sure if, the last time BBMR came in, they told us that they took that money away to give to the hospital when they said there were, they made a list of appropriations that were like de-appropriated. So we'd have to follow up with that. But hopefully, with USDA's testimony today, there are other leases of, I mean, other methods of bring, having the individuals apply for infrastructure. Hopefully, the entire land trust apply for the infrastructure. I guess he's gone, but yeah, he was talking about a $64,000 family of four income level for this program. What, what is your normal, what are your other income levels for your other programs?
For Guam Housing, so we can go 200% of the median income. So it could be times two for that. So.
What does your median income seem?
It's the same, that's the formula. So we would base it at 200. For our direct program, they would have to be denied by another financial institution before they come to Guam Housing. So even if they exceed the 64 or up to, I mean, they would still have to come, they would meet that statutory requirement of being denied. So then we can go ahead and pursue. When we do the affordability analysis, we look at how, how, what program would best meet the needs of what they're, they're requesting. So we've also developed a program that is a leverage program that is joint with rural development. It was supposed to bring in another source of funding for USDA. And Guam Housing will do a first mortgage of 20% financing. USDA will do the 80%. So in total, they still get the 100%, but at least the 80% would give them a higher buying power because of the subsidy that they would receive. Guam Housing will go ahead and give the 20% at whatever prevailing. And even if the prevailing is at seven, we did, I did report to the board that going that high, we're not going to be assisting anybody. So they capped it and they said, okay, do not exceed 6%. That's already by law, but it was amended to even go as low as four depending on the prevailing. So we're really trying to see how best we can deliver a program, whether it's a combination of RD, Rural Development's program, our program, we have our direct program. We have a program called the COT, which is up to 40% interest-free. We take a second mortgage. The bank would take the, the first mortgage and they would give up to 80. And then we can come in. And really, for a $40,000 loan for 30 years, it's only like 116. It's an interest-free loan. So we have products out there that are designed to either be a direct or a partnership with the federal as well as with the financial institutions, so.
And Tremor Land Trust recipients are able to avail of any of those?
Yes.
All of them?
Yes.
Thank you. And one thank you and the board for your work on this. I know you guys have been diligent all these years, continuing to find ways to get these loans out. Can the ARP be used for infrastructure?
I would need to see what particular infrastructure it does allow for. There is some infrastructure items listed in the final rule overview. But I would have to get back to you on that.
All right. I thought it was actually a listed use of ARP.
Yeah, there's actually, they align items or things that are eligible and some that are ineligible. Like ineligible one would be prisons, I believe, is ineligible for capital expenditures.
Okay. And could you just state the rule again about what it can be used for? It can be used for energy credit?
So with the energy credit, there's also the, the rule about impact to homes, assistance to households. The energy credit would be an assistance to households, but it has to be low or moderate income households or communities. And those are income limit of 300% of the federal poverty guideline for a household of three is 65,880. And.
Sorry, can you repeat that? I'm not hearing you.
The income limit for 300% of the federal poverty guideline for a household of three is 65,880 per year. And so to be eligible for the assistance to households, you have to fall within that threshold. So if you're doing energy credit to the entire island, I don't think everybody falls within that threshold.
Okay, so not everyone, but clearly, it was not based on whether it was caused by the war or caused by the pandemic, right? That's what the reason we were given in the past. All right. Whether, whether the increased rates at GPA were caused, what was the cause of their increased rates? But, all right. Okay.
I think it also does have to be pandemic related to, to add to that, yeah. But the threshold limit also applies as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Then we're going to move to the back. Senator Fisher, do you have any questions for the panel? You have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you very much and good morning. I wanted, the BBMR told us that, I just wanted to clarify this, told us that the governor had authorized allocations from the ARP funds to the Guam Housing Corporation for $500,000 for the first-time homeowners. Is that a permissible use of ARP money?
Seeing that the, the income threshold limit and maybe Guam Housing can confirm what, what eligible or who are the eligible applicants for this, but we consider that as eligible expense.
Okay, so that is eligible under ARP. And she, as a veteran, thank you, Governor, but you, she also gave $100,000 in ARP num money. Is that a permissible use?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I just got a little confused there. But I think the testimony is that if you contribute the $500,000 into the escrow account, that is not permissible, correct?
So the way that this particular program that we're here today on, it sounds like there's an agreement between Guam Housing and USDA to have a minimum deposit of 500,000, which if, I'm not too sure with the details of the program, maybe Guam Housing can clarify more. But if they need 500,000 to be in this escrow account in order to access the USDA funds, I consider that a matching requirement. And then the ARP funds are ineligible to be used for the non-federal matching component.
Okay, thank you. And that seems to make sense because in, I was getting the, you know, I'm hearing ARP. I'm hearing the escrow account and also first-time homeowners, and these are actually separate things. Okay. So thank you for that.
Senator Fisher, would you like for Guam Housing to chime in on, on the availability of the
Certainly.
the cap amount to be able to use the ARP funding?
Okay, for the first-time homeowner assistance program, it's not an income-driven program. It's more a cost. So the cost of home is going to be over 420,000. It would be ineligible to receive the grant. So it's a cost-driven program for the first-time homeowner.
Thank you very much for that because another question I had was, in the bill, we say that the median home price is $420,000, but eligible transactions are capped at 375. Should we change the cap on eligible transactions to match median home prices on Guam?
Even with 420, people are having a difficult time trying to find a home. It, it, even if they said it's 375, there's usually costs associated with that so that they would have to do the repairs.
Absolutely.
So the total then may even exceed the 420. But for, to get the grant, it's at 420 now. But if, if the data supports a lower amount, then.
Is it, ma'am, is it, is it true that, today, today, and eligible transactions are capped at 375?
It's 420 for this program, but 420 is what it is.
Okay.
For the first-time homeowner.
I'm getting a little confused because when I looked at Chapter 7, 12 GCA, the Guam Housing Corporation enactment, it refers to 375 as being a cap for an eligible transaction. Could you help me with that?
Point of information, Madam Chair?
Please.
Please take your point, sorry, Senator Fisher. Senator Duennas, your point of information.
Yeah, for my good colleague, this has been changed by law. In fact, and then, and then a subsequent law now allows the board of directors to automatically change as needed. So they don't need to come back to the legislature anymore. So it just, I wanted to help my friend with that, that, that this is all now based on the board of directors at Guam Housing to, to make those changes.
And it's concurred by Guam Housing? Concur it, please.
That is correct.
Okay. You may continue, Senator Fisher.
They do concur?
Yes, sir. They said they do concur.
Okay. And thank you, Senator Duennas, for that clarification, but GCA just hasn't been updated to reflect that. Okay. Now, for the escrow program, who is the escrow? Or what is the escrow? I'm sure it's a local bank, I would assume.
We're talking about the escrow for the, for the, on the proposed bill?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that would be a joint account, escrow account that would be for Guam Housing and Rural Development to use in the event there's a default. And that's an actual payment to the lender that, to RD, that it's, it's in default. But if it's just a non-performing loan and they've, they're still, they're not accelerating the payment, that, that, those funds would not be used. So they would actually be in the foreclosure or they, even at foreclosure, they could cure it before they actually lose their home. But this escrow account is strictly for payment in the event they, we, they do foreclose on the home and the lender would have to be paid.
Yes, ma'am, that's understood, but my, my question is really, I mean, we refer, we refer to it as an escrow account. When we haven't, when we set up an escrow, there is an escrow. And I'm just wondering who, who holds the, who is the recipient of the escrow instructions?
It's a joint account with Guam Housing and, and Rural Development. It's not going to any escrow. It's just that it's a restricted account.
Okay, so, okay, so it's, it's kind of inaccurate to refer to it as an escrow. Is that correct?
I guess with the intent that it be specific in the purpose of the, of the account, of the funds.
Okay. All right. If I wanted to, if I was, if I was, I was, I presented an eligible transaction and it was approved. As part of my, as part of closing, would I receive, as the recipient, would I receive escrow instructions?
Instructions will go to the title company and the title company would be the escrow to disperse the phone, the, the funds accordingly, based on the lender's instruction. Some may be a joint where the borrower would have to put in their share, part of the loan proceeds. And then it would be established, which would go to an escrow. And usually, when it goes into an escrow, it's a restricted account.
Sure.
They require one full payment for an insurance premium. That would usually go to an escrow account strictly for, for payment of insurance and taxes. But most of the funds would go into the escrow where, at the beginning, at the inception of the closing, the escrow, the title company would be the one to disperse accordingly, but it will be at the instructions of the lender.
Okay, that, so, yes, okay, thank you very much. That's, that's what I was driving at. There are instructions for release of funds from escrow.
Yes, by the lender.
Okay, thank you. On any given transaction under the first-time homeowners, what would Guam Housing Corporation's total exposure be? No more than 10,000?
For F-TAP, the maximum you can get is 10,000, but it's 4% of the selling price.
Okay. So essentially, you're, this is, I'm sure this is the wrong word, but you're kind of like a guarantor for the first 10,000?
Not necessarily. We won't be dispersing. Although we receive applications, we continue to receive. We won't disperse until we actually have the funds in the account, on the F-TAP account.
Okay. Now, the loan is secured by the property, correct?
Yes, through mortgage.
And through mortgage. And does Guam Housing Corporation file a lien, as a lien holder against the property?
Yes, it's in favor of Guam Housing Corporation.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much for your answers. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. Senator Cananta, do you have any questions?
To CLTC?
Yes. Well, to anyone on the panel right here, sir. Yeah, you have the floor.
Okay, Mr. Joey, do you guys have legal counsel?
At this time, we do.
Okay, your legal counsel is the Attorney General's Office, right?
Is an attorney from the Attorney General's Office, correct?
Do you, is it, is in your opinion that you guys need your own legal counsel? Because your legal counsel just.
Senator Cananta, can we, can we stick to the bill itself? I've been advised by the chair, sending me a text that we have to kind of stay on, stay on the path here on the bill. So if we can keep it to that, thank you.
Okay, I'm just asking because you guys have a lot of legal issues. You got 8,000 clients that you're going to go through, right? Along with all of you people up here, we're trying to figure out how to get to solutions. And it seems to me that we have like high turnover with the AG's office. And you guys are really much affected because one day you have this attorney A and then attorney B, then tomorrow you have attorney C, all of them singing different songs. So I'm just trying to find out what's the best way for you guys to have a better legal counsel. And I think it's hiring your own personnel for your agency, correct?
Thank you, Senator Cananta. Like I said, we'll stay to the, what is on the bill. And that is not on the bill on the Attorney General's Office. So we'll, if you have another question that pertains to the bill on these funds that are being appropriated, please ask it. If not, then I'll move forward to the next person. Okay, thank you, Senator Cananta. Senator Siniklis, do you have any questions for the panel?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I, I don't want to stand in a way of progress, but I do have some questions. I do support the measure. Is this kind of like subprime lending, though, what we're doing here? Remember the housing bubble 2000, 2008 where we all got in trouble because, you know, we're, so, you know, this is not subprime lending to, to people who might not be able to afford the loans?
No, it's, Rural Development's loan program has never been labeled as being subprime. They can go as low as 1%, but as, as their income increases, they can go up to the note rate. But because of their, their, of their income, they can be, have a subsidy to reduce that loan rate. So they can still retain homeownership.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you. Just for, I, I just wanted to clarify. I, I support the measure and I applaud everything that we're trying to do to provide housing to everybody. But also, like in, in cases of default or arrears, what are the programs that you guys have? Or how do you assist, because, you know, we want to protect the government's interest in every way possible, right? So how would you assist somebody who's kind of like behind in payments and to help, to help them along with the, to keep the loan? Because I wouldn't want anybody to default or, you know, so do you have a way to manage? Because I wouldn't want anybody to default or, you know, so do you have a way to manage that? And could you explain that?
I do, I am aware that Rural Development has numerous servicing options. I mean, they really go, they can go have a moratorium and they won't even have to pay for a year, depending on on the reason why they're in default. So they have many options for servicing and they would explore all of that before they tried to move forward. If Guam Housing, because of the CLTC, Guam Housing will be involved, we will look at options also if they can refinance. If they no longer are eligible for Rural Development, we will look at options, how best we can help them to prevent foreclosure and to retain homeownership.
Okay, yes, ma'am, thank you, thank you for that. So so when they, when they're kind of having problems with one program, we can also try to mitigate it so that they can go into another more manageable program. And you also mentioned forbearance and other other programs where you can help them, sustain them through, you know, probably some tough times. And I just wanted to clarify that. I do support the measure and I just wanted to to try to understand it further. And I didn't mean to call it a subprime, it's just, the way I see it is that when somebody gets denied from a regular financial institution, then that's, that means you would offer them the the loan, right?
That's in our statute, yes.
Right, and it's, is it, it's not based solely on credit history? Or does that make, does that play a part in your, in your, how you dole out the loan?
No, it for like for CLTC less seized, already the banks would deny them because the collateral isn't eligible. They won't be able to exercise their right in the event the loan is in default. So that would be sufficient for them to be referred to Guam Housing.
Oh, okay, so yeah, so, okay, now it's much more clear to me. So you know, the collateral, it's it's more toward leaning toward collateral more than it is leaning to credit history.
Right.
Yes, thank you, ma'am, thank you for clarifying that. I have no, nothing further and I do support the measure. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Senator Siniklis. At this time, my colleagues, we're gonna take a short, like five-minute break to allow the panel to get up, stretch their legs and and for Joey to thaw out. It's freezing up here, as he said. So we'll be back and when we come back, we're gonna begin on the front row with Minority Leader Senator Blas asking the first questions for the second round. So we'll be right back in about five minutes recess until then.
Committee House, call back to order. My colleagues, we're on the second round. Just advise everyone also that on the amendment section on the third round, I do have an amendment and that's just to identify that we're, we're gonna, we're gonna, the bill would incorporate the excess revenue identified in in the Budget Act. Senator Frank, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one question for a point of clarification. And this will start off with Mr. Bazza. The use of the ARP funds for the Guam, for the first time homeowners program, $500,000. Isn't there a provision within ARP that the funds have to be either expend or encumbered in an ex, by 2020, September of this year?
December.
December?
Of '24, encumbered by December of '24 or obligated before December of '24. And then expenditure end date is December of 2026.
Okay. Question to Guam Housing on the first time homeowners program. You got the $500,000 into your account. Will you be able to meet?
We currently have 24 applicants on a waitlist.
Okay, so...
Yeah, it's, it's, this program has been pretty popular and many home buyers within that price range are coming in to apply, which we're very happy about.
So you're confident that that basically the $500,000 in its form? I mean, when it revolves, that's a different story, but in in the initial expenditure, you be able to...
We should be able to, it seems like I said, we don't, we don't stop the application process, we continue because we want to show the need. So right now, already half would be dispersed. The money's not there, but we already have reviewed all these applications, they're eligible. So once we get that money, already half would be committed. And we are continuing to receive more.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. That's it, Mr. Chair? See you.
That's one plus one plus one, but it was good. Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Duñez, do you have any questions? None, Senator Park, do you have any question? None, Senator Perez, do you have any question for the panel?
Just perhaps for Tomorrowland Trust. Do you envision doing multifamily developments? And also when you, you know, give out land to Tomorrowland Trust applicants, are you going to assist with the infrastructure? And do you, is it your intention to comply with the subdivision law?
I stand by, is that in reference to the bill? I want to make sure we're consistent. Anything outside this bill, I just want to make sure we're we're in line with that.
Yeah, I think it's irrelevant because if we're talking about affordability, you know, some of these, even giving out a loan for 440,000 may not be affordable to some families. And the idea is that if there's multifamily developments, that can make it more affordable.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead and continue, Joey.
If the multifamily developments concerning high rises, I, in the past, that was a discussion. At this time, I can't further comment on that as management will have to decide that and discuss that. In relation to assisting our constituents with infrastructure, CLTC in the past, under even the directorship of Ms. Camacho, we have met with RCAC, as mentioned by Mr. Diego. It's a nonprofit group out of Hawaii. We've explored the Suda program. In the past, we were here at the legislature, but on the other side, and we had disclosed that our pilot project was Track 1022 in Derido to install wastewater and water, but that had a price tag of $50 million. Yes, we we did go back and research and try to identify a funding source in the event that it became a loan and a grant. Through the efforts of the recently enacted undersea water cable law, that's a funding source that we've identified that can be used towards, to securitize towards the loan as a repayback method. Although we're still trying to figure out what's our cost recovery method, we can securitize the six cable or the $600,000 yearly revenue, but how do we move to the next project? So yes, we we have had explored other alternatives for financing in terms of the installation, installation of infrastructure. Like I mentioned earlier, the Board had approved an MOU for the usage of our property behind the Chigo Substation Plant. In return, GPA will provide in-kind services of providing power poles and energizing specific tracks that are identified by the Board.
Appreciate that response. This is for the Guam Housing Corporation, so how do you ensure financial sustainability?
We follow our loan underwriting criteria. So there is a percentage, how much would go for the the house payment in reference in comparison to their total income as well as their total... So there is a percentage, how much would go for the house payment in reference, in comparison to their total income, as well as their total, their back ratio, which includes the proposed housing, their current debts and anything, um, that it does not exceed 41%. And that's by statute.
Okay, thank you. I feel like there's one more question I had. In your testimony, you'd mentioned that, um, where do you get additional funding? So 50, 500,000, 500,000 is, I guess, the bottom threshold. Do you envision ways of supplementing it so that we continually have 500,000 in the account?
When the funds are dispersed for the purpose of paying off a loan, when the loan, when that asset is refinanced, another loan to sell, and that would still be under Tomorrowland Trust, they would seek the next qualified, then that, the proceeds of that would go back into the escrow account. So 500,000 is intended to be sustained in that way.
Okay, thanks. And then also as far as loans are concerned, um, is it a fixed loan? Or is it going to be, um, is it going to decrease based on what's left on the principal?
Oh, yes, they would only pay off what's, what's the balance on that, on that loan.
But as far as the interest, how is it applied? Is it a percentage of the total amount borrowed? Or will that, uh, the amount decrease as the principal decreases?
It decreases as the principal decreases.
Oh, that, that makes it much more affordable. Okay, that's good to hear. What is the term for that? So I don't have to explain the whole, is there a term for that as far as the type of loan? Uh, interest, how it's applied?
It's not a block interest. It's just the amortized interest. As, as the principal is reduced, then that interest would only be charged on what's, so if they pay it off or they make extra payments, then that would even decrease further any interest accrual.
Okay, that's good to hear. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Madam Vice?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to try this again, based on previous questions and just a question, uh, some answers that were already brought up by Tomorrowland Trust. I'm going to go back to the 166 lots or 100-plus lots that are there in Gigo. And I want to say, based on knowledge and being here a very long time, over 20 years, the property in Gigo is Tomorrowland Trust. The 166 lots that I'm talking about, right? And, um, it was rezoned, uh, in 2013, if I'm not mistaken. Am I right? Something to that effect. And, and the request for invitation for infrastructure in 2022, um, was, was issued. And in 2022, that, that was in 2022, if I'm not mistaken. And then from there, it just ended. So why didn't it move forward? I know we were looking at Suda and other programs and opportunities that you just kind of talked about later. So maybe just the status on that, because again, I'm going to reiterate, Mr. Chair, that this is Tomorrowland Trust property. And if this bill goes through, the opportunity for those lots to be available to these, to these land recipients on the waiting list that could ascertain all of this, it would be a win. So first of all, that update, sir.
Speaker, you are correct. The 166 lot track you are referring to is legally known as Track 10123. It's across the Gigo basketball court. It's the property right in front of the Paradise Meadows. And you are correct that it was rezoned from agriculture to residential. And through the agreement with the developers of Paradise Meadows, uh, the Tomorrowland Trusts or at that time had provided access. Through that eastman, there is infrastructure that runs through that eastman that it could be available through the development of Track 10123. The CLTC board had identified that track for an affordable housing subdivision. And so as we, uh, explore the bill and its intentions, there is a possibility that, um, CLTC can hopefully engage in an RFP for some developer to come in to build Turnkey, which would go in line and work, work well with the 502 program of USDA. Yes, you are correct. There was an RFI issued in 2022, a request for interest. There was some developers who have, who had submitted interest in developing that property. Unfortunately, we have not moved on to the RFP portion of the whole procurement process.
So thank you for that, Joey. And, and just because I just want to bring history in and what the possibilities are and how this policymaking body would do good by at least opening, getting creative, stepping out of the box and getting creative to provide this kickoff so that, that, that this, programs like this or things that are almost shovel-ready can be able to, to tag on to, hooky right or whatever, into, into getting true ownership for, for our applicants who may qualify. Because again, it's Tomorrowland Trust property, right? Number two, Mr. Chair, just one more, I promise. Uh, and in review of the public, uh, of a public hearing that was done, Guam Water Works Authority, right? And, and Tomorrowland Trust Commission said that they would bring infrastructure in Adacaw for 300 family lots. Joey, I'm again asking you, uh, how is that being funded? What's going on? What's the update? Because again, another opportunity so that we can move forward for our residents.
Yes, there is a project with GWA and CLTC in regards to upgrading the water system and installing wastewater in the Adacaw area. I believe that will be funded through a, a grant or the ARP with GWA. Uh, CLTC is currently working on, um, informing the constituents of the project that will, uh, begin. But yes, you are correct. There is a project of the installation of water and wastewater.
Henceforth, this bill, Mr. Chair, is probably a very good opportunity for us to show that we want to provide houses, new houses, for our recipients in, in our island who qualify for these programs. So, Mr. Chair, with that being said, again, I will continue to share my support on this effort and ask that we, uh, look at this measure and move it forward immediately. So thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for answering my questions this morning. Sanamasi.
Thank you. Senator Brown, do you have any questions for the panel? None. Senator Lohon, do you have any questions for the panel?
Yes, just a couple of questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cruz, actually, the question was pretty much answered already by Mr. Cruz, by, asked by Senator, Senator Perez. But let me, let me, let me ask this, because we're talking about infrastructure. And for, um, folks that are Tomorrowland Trust properties that have infrastructure, let me ask, because there have been several, um, folks that are living on Tomorrowland Trust property that have infrastructure within a few, either 100 yards or so from, uh, from, again, from main infrastructure for water and power. They've already have a pedestal erected. Water was within, I think, a few yards. The authorization, uh, to get power and water utilities connected, the authorization is, is sought from, uh, CLTC to the utilities. So when those authorizations were brought forth to the utilities, now they're saying they need to go back and ask for a lease agreement from CLTC. Is there, has been a change of policy? Because in, in the past, the authorizations given by CLTC for utilities have been honored by the utilities. But these few, um, again, homeowners, dwellers in CLTC property have been turned down and said, now they had, they need to go back to CLTC to, again, and they're requiring now lease agreements from the CLTC in order for those utilities to be, um, again, connected.
Senator, I, I'm not too sure if the utility agencies' process or policies had changed, but CLTC today continues to issue utility authorizations for power and water. We do have a constituency that are on CLTC property through other government programs of the past. So they're considered preoccupiers and those people do not, some, some of them don't have leases. So we do issue them the utility authorizations.
Okay, just, yeah. Um, and those authorization, my understanding, they're, as they're issued, they're only good for 30 days at a time, right?
That's a policy decision of the utility company.
Okay, yeah, because it's been, I think, three times already renewed and they're, they're needing, again, the utilities are telling them they need a lease agreement. But I know within the same track, there have been individuals that have, uh, have had their, their utilities connected with just the authorizations from, from CLTC. But again, I don't know, would we be able to find out if that has changed now?
We, we can inquire.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Tello, do you have any questions for the panel?
Uh, no, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to thank the panel for being here this afternoon and greatly appreciate your comments and, and answers to our questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Fisher? None. Senator Canata? Um, Senator Snickler, do you have anything? None. Madam Speaker, do you have any question for the panel? You'll be the last.
Is there a reason that this program wasn't considered sooner?
It was considered since 2005, when an MOU was signed. But I know that there were some changes that rural development also had that they had to address because it's Tomorrowland Trust. So I think after that was addressed, that's when it was opened again for us to continue. But it's gone back since 2005.
So you're saying that Tomorrowland Trust recipients have already been recipients of this program? The 502?
None of the 502, but for Guam, for Guam Housing's program, we continue to provide. But 502, no, because they had some issues that they had to address before they actually implement the program.
Okay. So how soon do you think it will be implemented if this bill's passed?
I'm not sure, but I'm encouraging CLTC to go ahead and let us start doing, doing the analysis, the loan analysis to see where they fare so that when they're given the lease, they're ready to move. So, but in terms, I think that would have to be addressed by rural development. But I think they're just waiting to get the escrow and we should be able, because Guam Housing will be the one to package the loan application.
I think that's a great idea. I hope that they will be able to give you 100 applicants. And, uh, yeah, they can continue to control the order. However, yeah, there's no reason why they can't be vetted, I don't think, if, with their consent. All right. Well, thank you very much for all your work on this program and all the other programs at Guam Housing. Joey, she does masip for your work at the Tomorrowland Trust for many, many years and, uh, through good and bad. And hopefully, all good from here on. And thanks again to Mr. Baza from BBMR for being very frank with us. We appreciate your honest answers. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. At this point, I'd like to excuse the panelists and I'd like to thank you all for participating today. Please be safe. Thank you all for being here. At this point, we will recess and then come back to the third round. The third round is only amendments and comments. There's only one amendment, so we will come back, hopefully, in less than five minutes and we can wrap this up, this bill. Thank you.
From that short recess, Senator Sinagastin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, Madam Chair, I have an amendment. It was actually pushed forward by yourself and Vice Speaker. And I only put my name in the front. So it's really, it's really the Vice Speaker, Tina Rose Munro-Barnes, and yourself, Vice. Uh, what it is, is that on page, line, on line four, page three, to just add on that, you know, we discussed this earlier. It's actually, it's, uh, revenue collected in excess of adopted levels enumerated in Public Law 37 has 42. That's what the amendment is actually saying. And, and that's all it's identifying. It's not just general fund, no, it's specifically to revenue collected in excess of the adopted levels, uh, enumerated in Public Law 37 has 42. And that's the amendment for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Sinagastin. Would anybody like to speak on this amendment? Anybody would like to speak on it? There's nobody raising their hands. Okay, is there any objection to the amendment? Seeing no objection? Okay, Senator Sinagastin, would you like to close?
No, no need to close.
Okay, so with no objection, so ordered. Okay, anyone else with any amendments? I mean, that's the only one I've seen on the Google.
Madam Chair, I'd like to, unless anybody has an objection, that we go ahead and rise from the committee of the whole, because, oh, you, you want to be able to speak. Okay. I guess some of you would like to speak on, on, on the bill. No problem. Oh, I, I was going to identify that to add cosponsors.
Okay, Senator Sinagastin, you're recognized. Um, continue, please.
All right, I wanted to add, um, yourself, Madam Vice, to, as cosponsor. And we have, you know, I got Senator Lohon, I have Senator, especially Senator Duñez, because he, you know, he's, he's, he's come from Guam Housing. He's always been a strong supporter. Senator Brown. And I think everybody, actually, everybody's in support of taking care of the people of Guam. So actually, to add everyone as cosponsors.
Thank you, Senator Sinagastin. So is there an objection to adding these cosponsors, starting with Senator Tidigui, Senator, I think it was next Senator Duñez, Senator Brown, and then Senator Parkinson and everyone else?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Okay, there's no objection, still ordered. Uh, anything else, Senator Sinagastin?
I, I, unless anyone really has an objection, that we go ahead and we just rise from the committee of the whole and, and accept the amended, as amended by the committee, Government Operation Appropriate and Substitute in the Committee of the Whole and the amendment in the Committee of the Whole to the bill.
Okay, there's a motion to rise into the committee of the, rise out of the committee of the whole. Is there any objections? No objections, so ordered. We are now going to take just a short recess as we. Seeing no objection, motion carries, so we're now in motion, Senator Parkinson.
Would you like me to read that motion?
Maybe an abbreviated version?
Sure, I would, at this time, I would like to motion to place Bill number 208-37COR, notwithstanding House rules to the session agenda, a three-month extension to the Programa Nazuda Para Itautaut Energy Credit Program, relative to providing customers with $300 credit towards their account, to the bottom of the agenda.
On the motion to place that bill, notwithstanding the rules, onto the bottom of the agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries, is there another motion? Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, I'd also like to make a motion to place Bill, which was really Bill 3037, I won't read the entire title, but it was relative the prohibition of employment of, in the government of Guam, of individuals that have been convicted of official misconduct on third reading for an override vote. On the governor's veto?
Yes, so, this would be a motion, notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Hagan Guahan, to place veto Bill number 30-37 onto the voting file for override, on that motion, is there anybody who would like to speak? This would be the time for debate of that motion. If there's no one, then the sponsor may close, sponsor of the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the consideration of the body, I know we, we discussed this during our previous session, and I certainly am asking my colleagues to really seriously consider overriding the governor's veto, the governor's justification is that she believes, in terms of the language of this bill, that it would allow existing employees that have since been hired, that had been previously convicted of official misconduct, that it might adversely affect their ability to stay employed in the government of Guam, but I very specifically discussed the language with legal counsel before this bill was introduced, to specify and understand and make sure, and there's nothing specifically in this bill that retroactives this bill, while we recognize there are some well-known individuals that have since been hired of official misconduct in the government, this particular bill was delayed in, in the last legislature and committee, it never saw the light of day, so I don't think those individuals are going to be affected, but the language specifically had to do with individuals that may be currently employed in the government of Guam, and then commit, commit an act that they get convicted of official misconduct, their employment would terminate automatically, and that also includes former individuals that have, that have stepped out of government employment as a result of actions they may have done, and want to come back moving forward, once this particular bill becomes law, then obviously would prohibit those individuals from coming back, there's no intent, even though the focus of the governor's veto message was, was quite large, I almost stick up the whole page, that was never the intent, obviously, it's a prospective bill, we did not specify anything being retro, so I don't think there's any misunderstanding in the language, and I have conferred again with legal counsel that that indeed was our intent when we originally passed this bill, and that's where the language stands today, so I hope my colleagues will stay with their original vote, to vote to override the governor's veto, I think the time has come, Madam Speaker, we continue to see the crimes in this community, the crimes against our people, and the crimes unfortunately, that have been performed by government officials that are in positions of responsibility, and I just don't think that should be rewarded, I think our people have suffered enough, we still see it every day, we see it every week, we see it every month in our community, with the misuse of authority and power that's been given to individuals of positions of government, that they've used and abused it, I don't think we should reward them, I don't think the people of Guam should have to carry that burden, so I ask my colleagues for their vote to override the governor's veto on Bill 3037, with that, Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Sizosmasi, Senator Brown, on that motion, notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Hagan Guahan, to place veto Bill number 30-37 in the voting file for reconsideration of the override, or, for an override, reconsideration of the veto, is there any objection to that motion? Seeing no objection, motion carries. All right, we're still under motions, is there any other motion? If not, we have, sorry, in second reading, then, we have Bill 124-37, Senator Perez, and we have Bill 208, that was just placed into the second reading, Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion, notwithstanding the rules, to reconsider the actions of the body on Bill number 185-37, ma'am.
On the motion, is there any objection? There's been an objection, all in favor of reconsideration of Bill 116, notwithstanding the rules, please raise your hand. Motion carries. All right, we've exhausted our, oh, no, there's still that, Senator Parkinson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, at this time, I would like to motion to place Bill number 208-37COR, notwithstanding House rules to the session agenda, an act to appropriate $15,828,000 from fiscal year 2024 general fund revenues collected in excess of the adoptive levels enumerated in public law 37-42, as amended to the Guam Power Authority for a three-month extension to the Programa Nazuda Para Itautaut Energy Credit Program, relative to providing customers with $300 credit towards their account, to the bottom of the agenda.
All right, thank you, Senator, so, I'm going to consider that as a motion to go back to motions for that purpose, on that motion to go back to motions, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries, so we're now in motion, Senator Parkinson.
Would you like me to read that motion?
Maybe an abbreviated version?
Sure, I would, at this time, I would like to motion to place Bill number 208-37COR to the session agenda, a three-month extension to the Programa Nazuda Para Itautaut Energy Program, Credit Program, relative to providing customers with $300 credit towards their account, to the bottom of the agenda.
On the motion to place that bill, notwithstanding the rules, onto the bottom of the agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries, is there another motion? Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, I'd also like to make a motion to place Bill, which was really Bill 3037, I won't read the entire title, but it was relative the prohibition of employment of, in the government of Guam, of individuals that have been convicted of official misconduct on third reading for an override vote. On the governor's veto?
Yes, so, this would be a motion, notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Hagan Guahan, to place veto Bill number 30-37 onto the voting file for override, on that motion, is there anybody who would like to speak? This would be the time for debate of that motion. If there's no one, then the sponsor may close, sponsor of the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the consideration of the body, I know we, we discussed this during our previous session, and I certainly am asking my colleagues to really seriously consider overriding the governor's veto, the governor's justification is that she believes, in terms of the language of this bill, that it would allow existing employees that have since been hired, that had been previously convicted of official misconduct, that it might adversely affect their ability to stay employed in the government of Guam, but I very specifically discussed the language with legal counsel before this bill was introduced, to specify and understand and make sure, and there's nothing specifically in this bill that retroactives this bill, while we recognize there are some well-known individuals that have since been hired of official misconduct in the government, this particular bill was delayed in, in the last legislature and committee, it never saw the light of day, so I don't think those individuals are going to be affected, but the language specifically had to do with individuals that may be currently employed in the government of Guam, and then commit, commit an act that they get convicted of official misconduct, their employment would terminate automatically, and that also includes former individuals that have, that have stepped out of government employment as a result of actions they may have done, and want to come back moving forward, once this particular bill becomes law, then obviously would prohibit those individuals from coming back, there's no intent, even though the focus of the governor's veto message was, was quite large, I almost stick up the whole page, that was never the intent, obviously, it's a prospective bill, we did not specify anything being retro, so I don't think there's any misunderstanding in the language, and I have conferred again with legal counsel that that indeed was our intent when we originally passed this bill, and that's where the language stands today, so I hope my colleagues will stay with their original vote, to vote to override the governor's veto, I think the time has come, Madam Speaker, we continue to see the crimes in this community, the crimes against our people, and the crimes unfortunately, that have been performed by government officials that are in positions of responsibility, and I just don't think that should be rewarded, I think our people have suffered enough, we still see it every day, we see it every week, we see it every month in our community, with the misuse of authority and power that's been given to individuals of positions of government, that they've used and abused it, I don't think we should reward them, I don't think the people of Guam should have to carry that burden, so I ask my colleagues for their vote to override the governor's veto on Bill 3037, with that, Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Sizosmasi, Senator Brown, on that motion, notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Hagan Guahan, to place veto Bill number 30-37COR in the voting file for reconsideration of the override, or, for an override, reconsideration of the veto, is there any objection to that motion? Seeing no objection, motion carries. All right, we're still under motions, is there any other motion? If not, we have, sorry, in second reading, then, we have Bill 124-37, Senator Perez, and we have Bill 208, that was just placed into the second reading, Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion, notwithstanding the rules, to reconsider the actions of the body relative to Bill number 185-37, ma'am.
On the motion, notwithstanding the rules, to reconsider the actions of the body on Bill number 185, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're back from recess and we've risen from the Committee of the Whole. Senator Sengasteen, Appropriations Chair, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wish to report back to the body after deliberation of Bill 114-37 as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation Appropriations and substituted in the Committee of the Whole that the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole to be placed on the third reading file of 114. Do you want me to go ahead and read the other bill also?
Of 114, on that motion to accept the recommendations of the Committee of the Whole to put the bill as amended and substituted onto the third reading file. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Sengasteen, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wish to report back to the body after deliberation on Bill 107-37 LS as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation Appropriation and further amended in the Committee of the Whole with the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole to be placed on the third reading file.
On that motion to place Bill 107 as amended by the Committee, substituted in the Committee of the Whole and further amended in the Committee of the Whole onto the third reading, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion notwithstanding the rules to reconsider the actions of the body on Bill Number 116-37, ma'am.
On that motion, is there any objection? There's been an objection, all in favor of reconsideration of Bill 116, notwithstanding the rules, please raise your hand. Motion carries. All right, we've exhausted our, oh no, there's still that. Senator Parkinson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. At this time, I would like to motion to place Bill Number 208-37 COR, notwithstanding House rules to the session agenda, an act to appropriate $15,828,000 from fiscal year 2024 general fund revenues collected in excess of the adoptive levels enumerated in public law 37-42, as amended to the Guam Power Authority for a three-month extension to the Programa Azuda Para Itautaut Energy Credit Program relative to providing customers with $300 credit toward their account, to the bottom of the agenda.
All right, thank you, Senator. So I'm going to consider that as a motion to go back to motions for that purpose. On that motion to go back to motions, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. So we're now in motion, Senator Parkinson.
Would you like me to read that motion?
Maybe an abbreviated version?
Sure. At this time, I would like to motion to place Bill Number 208-37 COR to the session agenda, three-month extension to the Programa Azuda Para Itautaut Energy Credit Program relative to providing customers with $300 credit towards their account, to the bottom of the agenda.
On the motion to place that bill, notwithstanding the rules, onto the bottom of the agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Is there another motion? Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd also like to make a motion to place Bill, which was really Bill 3037. I won't read the entire title, but it was relative the prohibition of employment in the government of Guam of individuals that have been convicted of official misconduct on third reading for an override vote. On the governor's veto.
Yes, so this would be a motion, notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Hagan Guahan, to place vetoed Bill Number 30-37 onto the voting file for override. On that motion, is there anybody who would like to speak? This would be the time for debate of that motion. If there's no one, then the sponsor may close, sponsor of the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I appreciate the consideration of the body. I know we discussed this during our previous session and I certainly am asking my colleagues to really seriously consider overriding the governor's veto. The governor's justification is that she believes, in terms of the language of this bill, that it would allow existing employees that have since been hired, that had been previously convicted of official misconduct, that it might adversely affect their ability to stay employed in the government of Guam. But I very specifically discussed the language with legal counsel before this bill was introduced to specify and understand and make sure, and there's nothing specifically in this bill that retroactives this bill. While we recognize there are some well-known individuals that have since been hired of official misconduct in the government, this particular bill was delayed in the last legislature and committee, it never saw the light of day, so I don't think those individuals are going to be affected. But the language specifically had to do with individuals that may be currently employed in the government of Guam and then commit an act that they get convicted of official misconduct, their employment would terminate automatically. And that also includes former individuals that have stepped out of government employment as a result of actions they may have done and want to come back moving forward. Once this particular bill becomes law, then obviously would prohibit those individuals from coming back. There's no intent, even though the focus of the governor's veto message was quite large, I almost stick up the whole page, that was never the intent. Obviously, it's a prospective bill. We did not specify anything being retro, so I don't think there's any misunderstanding in the language. And I have conferred again with legal counsel that that indeed was our intent when we originally passed this bill, and that's where the language stands today. So I hope my colleagues will stay with their original vote to vote to override the governor's veto. I think the time has come, Madam Speaker. We continue to see the crimes in this community, the crimes against our people, and the crimes, unfortunately, that have been performed by government officials that are in positions of responsibility. And I just don't think that should be rewarded. I think our people have suffered enough. We still see it every day, we see it every week, we see it every month in our community with the misuse of authority and power that's been given to individuals of positions of government, that they've used and abused it. I don't think we should reward them. I don't think the people of Guam should have to carry that burden. So I ask my colleagues for their vote to override the governor's veto on Bill 3037. With that, Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Senator Brown. On that motion, notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Hagan Guahan, to place vetoed Bill Number 30-37 COR in the voting file for reconsideration of the override, or for an override, reconsideration of the veto. Is there any objection to that motion? Seeing no objection, motion carries. All right, we're still under motions. Is there any other motion? If not, we have, sorry, in second reading, then we have Bill 124-37, Senator Perez, and we have Bill 208, that was just placed into the second reading. Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion, notwithstanding the rules, to reconsider the actions of the body relative to Bill Number 185-37, ma'am.
On the motion, notwithstanding the rules, to reconsider the actions of the body on Bill Number 185, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Ma'am, I'd also like to make the motion, notwithstanding the rules, to reconsider the actions of the body on Bill 184-37 as well, ma'am.
On the motion, notwithstanding the House rules to reconsider the actions of the body in Bill Number 184, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. All right, is there any other motion? All right, so to recap, we've got Bill 124-37 COR on second reading and Bill 208. Senator Perez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to set aside Bill 124-37.
All right, there's a motion to set aside. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. So on Bill Number 208, we will automatically go into Committee of the Whole for this bill because it's an appropriations bill.
Madam Speaker, I have a motion. My motion is that we waive the Committee of the Whole. That was discussed in the other two bills of the availability of funds, and then we'll just go ahead and go right to the bill and discuss it.
There's a motion to waive the Committee of the Whole. There's an objection, all in favor of waiving the Committee of the Whole, please raise your hand. Motion fails. So we will resume in the Committee of the Whole at 2:00 p.m. So we're going to recess till 2:00 p.m. and we will go straight into Committee of the Whole on Bill 208.